And Mrs. Mullenbeck, we are ready.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Education of Glenbrook High School, District 225. And could we start, please, with the roll, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Downing.
Here.
Mr. Galwacki.
Mrs. Hope.
Here.
Ms. Mullenbeck.
Here.
Mr. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Schein.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg. Six members present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Moving on, do we have any changes to the agenda that was circulated? Dr. Gravel.
There have been no changes.
In that case, could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is our superintendent report, so take it away, Dr. Gravel.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mullenbeck, and welcome to so many people who are here. For our friends who might be streaming online, I want to assure you that between two rooms, we have an amazing amount of student athletes, young scholars, parents, and community members here to celebrate in some amazing recognitions. To kick those off, I'd like to invite Mrs. Hughes and Dr. Georges to the podium to introduce our journalism award recipients.
Good evening. So tonight, from GBN, we are pleased to recognize our Torch editors and award recipients, including some recent alumni responsible for last year's editorial staff and some of the awards as well. So when I say your first names, just wave so that we can recognize you. So for this year's staff, we have Natalie, Raffaela, Molly, Lucy, Jaden, and our alumni Alex and Sineery, Caitlin and Marissa, who I was not able to be here this evening. But I wanted to share a little bit about why they're here. So the National Scholastic Press Association conducts an annual critique service evaluating and scoring entries in the areas of coverage and content, text, visuals, and presentation. According to the NSPA's website, the composite score from all sections awards an honor rating ranging from third class to All-American, and the All-American rating is the highest rating given in the critique service. The 2024-25 edition of The Torch earned All-American recognition, making this the third time in the last four years that The Torch has been recognized as an All-American newspaper. Our editors were Alex and Sineery. In addition, we are recognizing several NSPA individual awards for our journalists. First, to our junior Lucy, seniors Raffaela, Molly, and alumni Marissa and Caitlin, who finished fifth in the nation for their page spread titled "Teen Budgeting," which was published last fall. And finally, our seniors Jaden Han, Raffaela, and alumni Caitlin Lu, sorry, earned honorable mention for their piece "Behind the Headlines," which was the brainchild of then editor-in-chief Alex. So we want to say congratulations to our Torch journalists for their hard work and national recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Similar to The Torch's experience, the Oracle was awarded the first place with two distinctions by NSPA, and Anna, Ellery, and Molly, our current co-editors-in-chief, were all part of the editorial board for that winning year last year. In addition to NSPA, these co-editors-in-chief are also here to represent the Oracle's award at KEMPA, the Kettle Moraine Press Association Journalism Conference that was held in last October. In addition to numerous individual awards for students, the newspaper received All-KEMPA honors, which is the highest honor for papers. The Oracle continues to receive accolades as it was just awarded third place in the nation at the Best of Show Competition for Newspapers at the Journalism Education Association's National Conference that was just held, what was that, last week? Yeah, in Nashville. A total of 22 Oracle editors attended the JEA conference, along with almost 5,000 other student journalists from high schools around the country. The 16 editors from the paper competed in onsite competitions, and of the 16, 12 won awards, and tonight we have them in attendance with us. So Olivia for newswriting, Meredith for editorial writing, Emma for feature writing, Bailey for sports writing, Molly for review writing, Ellery for commentary writing, Maya for newspaper layout, Zoha for press law and ethics, Anna for YB caption and sports, and Amani for graphic design and infographics, and also Reese and May, who could not be with us this evening. So let's give these ladies a round of applause. So proud of them. And the kids at South know I always celebrate my awesome of the day, and whenever I have my press conference, it's my awesome of the day, ladies. I would also like to take a moment to celebrate Mr. Bob Weisaki. He is our Oracle teacher and advisor, who was just named the 2025 KEMPA Advisor of the Year. Now, annually at the Fall Scholastic Journalism Conference, KEMPA, the organization honors advisors of the year. These advisors are selected for this distinction based on nominations that honor specific actions of what the advisor has done and/or what have they accomplished that sets them apart from their peers. I am so grateful that this organization has honored Bob for his knowledge, his inspirational work with our students, and the quality of advising that he has provided these budding journalists. Your mentorship to other staff, your expertise, and your passion for journalism have played a pivotal role in shaping these students and the journalism program at Glenbrook South. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I am eternally grateful to have the privilege to walk alongside you. Congratulations. So to all of our journalism honorees, this would be your moment to make it out of here before soccer from north comes in. This is your moment. Congratulations. We are so proud of all of you.
Congratulations, ladies. Good job, good job.
And as this transition is happening, we are very excited to welcome our 2025 IHSA Division 3A third place at state in boys soccer. So as they come on in, go ahead and make a few rows so everyone can see you guys. Welcome to everyone again. Welcome, everyone. And we'll just give some of your parents just a few moments so they can transition on in here. And at this point, I'm pleased to introduce Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Tomlinson, our athletic director.
Yes, we are excited and thrilled to recognize our IHSA Division 3A third place at state boys soccer team. And so as I say your first names, we're going in alphabetical order, so just wave when I say your first name, okay? We have Nick, Mateo, Paolo, Asher, Brennan, Ethan, Simon, Nikita, Ian, Jackson, Eric, Ben, Ethan, Kiran, Jack, Edie is not with us right now, Kusrov, oh, he is? Yay, you're here, okay. Joseph, Tommy, Manuel, John, Alexander, Cam, Flynn, Michael, Adrian, and our coaches, we have Coach Bignoki, Coach Ha, and Coach Locke. And our coach, Damano, was not able to be here tonight, but we're very excited. Here to say some more words about the epic season of boys soccer is our athletic director, Molly Tomlinson.
The GBN boys soccer team concluded their season with a remarkable overall record of 21, 3, and 3, culminating in a third-place finish at the IHSA State Tournament, a season defined by exceptional leadership, resilience, and a historic championship run. The team secured multiple major titles throughout the year, including being crowned Barrington Tournament champs, CSL South co-champs, a title clinched by upsetting Maine South and forcing a three-way tie, and achieving an IHSA playoff sweep as regional, sectional, and super-sectional champions. The team was led by a substantial and cohesive group of 20 seniors, four juniors and two sophomores. This close-knit group successfully navigated adversity and injuries throughout the season, demonstrated a commitment to grind each match and into the playoffs. Their consistent effort resulted in an impressive 17-game unbeaten streak leading into the state semifinals, with the Spartans showing immense competitive spirit in the postseason by defeating Fremd in a thrilling penalty kick shootout in the regional final, triumphing over Stevenson in double overtime in the sectional final, and securing the trip to state with a convincing victory against Elgin, South Elgin, in the super-sectional final. The team's success solidifies their position in program history, having truly left their mark as a group that achieved greatness through relentless effort and cohesion, proving that heart and resilience are the true foundation of a champion. Please help me congratulate the GBN's varsity soccer team and coaches for placing third in state. Congratulations.
Again, a heartfelt congratulations to all of you. It's an amazing accomplishment, not only for each of you, but also for an amazing coaching staff. So thank you so much for all that you do. At this point, you do have the opportunity to stay for a variety of wonderful reports. If you don't find that it's exciting right now, you are welcome to make your way out, and we really appreciate you taking the time to come this evening. Thank you so much. I feel with so many recognitions that a photo wall would be very helpful at different times. But what an amazing challenge and opportunity for us. I know.
Strategic plan.
With that said, we do have one more set of recognitions this evening. For those who are not familiar, Glenbrook annually submits documents or artifacts to the Illinois chapter of the National School of Public Relations Association, and we also submit them to the National School of Public Relations. And just the other week, we're very excited to share, we received five awards, awards of excellence in the areas of magazine and writing categories. A lot came from the amazing work of Christina Salanikas, our communications manager, and Carol Smith, our executive director of communications, and focused a lot on the Glenbrooks publication, that annual magazine that we send to all of our families. And then we also received awards of merit, of course, in an amazing superintendent's podcast. It's available for subscription at any point in time, as well as one of our videos. So just want to extend a round of applause for our communications team for all of their accomplishments. And then finally, it is no surprise that we are here this week for a shortened week to celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday. I think it's always important, as we come around to this time of year, that we pause and take a moment to reflect on the amazing contributions of so many. There's a lot of folks who often think that a school community is driven primarily by its students and staff, but there is also that firm foundation that exists throughout our community and with our families. The work that our parents do each and every day to support our children especially achieve some of the accomplishments that we just saw, whether it's helping students remember to balance a lot of things on their agenda, whether it's helping Uber them, if you will, from one place to the next place, or just make sure that they have the kindness and support that they need back home. Just on behalf of the entire district, thank you to everyone who contributes to making sure that our students can reach their full potential. The one picture I just wanted to point out here, this is actually a bit of a photo wall that's outside of my office, and in the middle of it, it says "The Glenbrook Way." If you haven't ever seen this before, what I had done just a few weeks after I came in was I asked all of the different folks that I work with directly to share with me some photos that really demonstrate the Glenbrook Way and what makes our school district amazing. And as I was looking through it today and thinking about what I wanted to share today, at the end of the day, it all comes down to providing that supportive environment to ensure that all of our staff and students feel a sense of belonging. And I'm so grateful to be part of a school learning community, a school district, that takes time to pause and reflect and acknowledge those individuals, and also the amazing accomplishments that our students and staff do each and every day. So, at the end of the day, my takeaway is, thank you to everyone. And with that said, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gravel. That was a lot of fun, so much accomplished, and well-deserved awards all around. So we are going to move on now to the board reports. And for tonight, I think what we'll focus on is many of our board members this past weekend, or starting on Friday, attended the Triple I Conference in Chicago with other school board members, other administrators. It was a great opportunity to learn together, and I wanted to have everyone, if they would like to share any thoughts or learnings that they brought back from the conference. But we'll start, I think, with Superintendent Gravel.
Sure. So I just want to thank everyone certainly for taking the time throughout the last three days, four days for some folks, for attending the different workshops, for coming together, having an opportunity to learn from each other outside of just the boardroom setting. You know, it's great to be able to talk about family and friends and the activities for the upcoming holidays. One of the things that I really appreciated learning more about at this conference was the concept of community engagement. And just like I mentioned about being thankful, engagement comes in so many forms and from so many groups of people. One of the topics that this board will be discussing through the Communications Committee in January, if I recall correct, is the concept of how can we improve our ability to hear from students, and what we often refer to in our profession as student voice. There are so many different ways that were discussed at the conference. One example is forming what's oftentimes referred to as a superintendent-student advisory committee. It takes students from all of your different schools, brings them together to have a very informative and engaging dialogue about different topics that directly impact student life. And a key takeaway that so many of the school districts were mentioning is that it's important, for lack of better terms, to make sure that your committee is representative of your entire student population. So just tonight, we were fortunate to have some of our young scholars who focused their efforts in journalism here, as well as our student athletes from our soccer team. There's also many other backgrounds and experiences. So just the other day, we talked about our growing population of students that are in our multilingual program. So making sure that you have students who are in different specialized programs also being part of that, to make sure you have a comprehensive understanding of what the student voice is. Along those lines, I was able to attend another workshop about the concept of even possibly creating a position within the board for a student member to be part of. And what was really intriguing from that is hearing from districts who have traveled down that path, and they've explained the incremental changes that they made over about a two-year period of time to make sure that not only our students are prepared for that, but our communities prepared for that, and even the board from a governance standpoint is prepared for that. So just getting some of those takeaways and lessons that they learned was absolutely huge. So those were my big takeaways from that. As well as I'd just like to point out, around Northfield Township, we must all think along the same lines, because as we go to these very large general sessions, very engaging speakers, and as we looked around, we saw District 34 and District 31, everyone all in the same spot, and we didn't even realize that, and then we were getting up. So I think there's something exciting happening in Northfield Township, and we must all be on the same wavelength.
Thank you, Dr. Gravel. Why don't we start, Mr. Galwacki? Did you have anything you wanted to share from the conference?
Yeah, just briefly, there were so many, sorry. No, there were so many excellent sessions and everything, and it was interesting to see, you know, all these schools at kind of different ends of the spectrum in terms of what they've been wrestling with and things that we've wrestled with at different times, and they're being at different stages. But them always, one thing that was common, the schools that we may recognize as some of our peers or the top districts in the state, always raising the bar, having a formula for how to develop a culture of change and growth, and raising that bar, and coming back to it and sharing with it. So that's one thing I will challenge myself and the rest of the board, that we share some of that experience with them in upcoming sessions and stuff.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. O'Hara?
Yeah, thank you. It's always interesting, you know, I don't come from education, and so when you go to these, you feel like you're flying blind a little bit sometimes. When you're here as a board member, you know, how am I helping you guys? And so you go to these and you listen to these other school districts talk, and it's always nice when you go to meetings and you realize, wow, they're really behind compared to us, you know? So you feel a little bit better when they're talking about issues that we've already dealt with, or that we've handled successfully. And then, so you have to shop around and find ones, like the ones with the students where they're participating, and whether that's something we do or not, something we could definitely talk about. I also attended one that was great that Joliet is doing, where they have paid internships. They're partnering with private and public companies in the Joliet area to try to get student interns to get experience and stuff, especially if you're not potentially going to be going onto higher education. And that was something that, to me, was fascinating and something we should probably be looking at. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hope?
I also, like Dr. Gravel, went to a lot about community engagement, and, you know, a lot of great ideas as a part of our Communications Committee in terms of increasing student voice, and also parent voice, and opportunities to hear more from all community members. Went to a really interesting one on school improvement planning, and also social media, and the effective and intentional and legal use for various roles within the community, and kind of trying to keep, not just keep up with, but keep ahead of all of the technological advancements in terms of communication. I think, in general, just felt consistently throughout the whole weekend, a deep sense of gratitude for being a part of this community, this board. As a board member, as a parent of a student, as a community member, just the relationships that we have, and the resources, and just how well we're doing. Like you said, it was just, it's unbelievable. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schein?
So I have somewhat of a mirror image, in a way, of Mr. O'Hara's comments, in that I found that a number of districts who were ahead of us in many areas, it wasn't surprising, considering there are 600 odd districts. And I think that's one of the benefits of attending something like this. You can learn something virtually, any door you open and sit down. And so a couple of things, a takeaway for me, is I went to a seminar on trust, and the two things, kind of bullet points, that I came away with was, who's the most trusted person in almost everybody's life? Who would that be? What do you think? It's mom, right? Mom is like the most trusted person, pretty obvious, right? But one thing this gentleman, you know, brought up, and he talked about the expense of lack of trust, how expensive it is to an organization when trust is lost in productivity, in inability to hire people, in inability to retain people. And he went through and gave a number of examples that I won't, you know, go through. And the last takeaway was that your problem generally isn't communications. That's kind of like a symptom, but you have to dig into things to find out really why communications are an issue. And I thought that was an interesting analysis, along with, this guy's been doing it for a long time. He's also a professor at, I think, University of Minnesota, and has done a lot of research on it. So that was one area that I found to be interesting and worth sharing. Going back to this topic of engaging, engagement and bringing students to the table, I'm glad this has gotten a greater distribution and interest. I will say that I brought this up three years ago, but at the time, it was only a few districts. This year, when I went to a follow-up, it was about 60 districts have students sitting at this table for engagement. Most of them, it's two students, and they've gone through, as Dr. Gravel explained, sort of an iterative process. Is it one? Is it two? Is it seniors, juniors? Do they come from, you know, the student government? And, you know, so a lot of schools, they've created a path for us, should we choose to do this. And most of them have this kind of superintendent's type of council to help frame the issues and get them to the board table. And at least in the panel that I went to, they had the student present to the board. So they were, they came in rock solid, like a business presentation. They knew what they wanted to communicate, you know, they got their, you know, two minutes or whatever, and then, you know, they had to be prepared to answer questions. And so I thought that was great. And then they were responsible for bringing that back to their schools. So it wasn't just, hey, we'll go talk to the board. It's like, we have a job to do. So I thought that was really great in terms of engagement. And let me see, I had one other, just give me one second, please. AI. So AI is coming, whether we like it or not, and one of the superintendents, so he's trying to lead and get out ahead of this, and they use the Google Suite, Gemini, and the Google Notebook LM language model. And the reason they're kind of went down that path is the built-in safety aspects for students, that it's already built into the platform. And he uses it, and I thought this was just fascinating. So he uses it as a tool to help communication with the board, and he uses AI to generate a podcast, a video, and prepare documents for the board. So he takes all of the stuff, and he lets AI, of course, proofread, but collate it down into, I can't even imagine, an AI-generated, you know, podcast and video. And he said, this is a means by which the board can approach the material much quicker. And he used the thing, well, you get like, you know, 300 pages to read through. We don't get that anymore. That's sort of old school. But it's a means to consolidate down the information. And then, as an administrative team, they're out kind of leading, getting a sense of what does this tool do, what are the limitations? And they are concerned about the things, you know, we would talk about, we've already started to talk about, in terms of, you know, integrity. And he talked about policy and guidelines and things where, and this was, you know, I think, a group where, you know, they're pretty much, they're ahead of us. And it was interesting. So it was a couple of my takeaways. And thanks for, you know, making it so we could all go to this. It's great.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing, and it was a great experience and really provided a lot of food for thought and opportunities to meet people who, as you say, you know, some districts are working through issues that maybe we've already been able to come to terms with, but were also introduced to new ideas that maybe we can bring to 225. to terms with, but we're also introduced to new ideas that maybe we can bring to 225. Myself, I did also attend as a delegate, the IASB meeting where there, as we have discussed, there were some constitutional amendments that were introduced, those all passed. There was one resolution that was passed with regard to school bus safety. And the one of the sessions that I attended that I thought was very useful and wanted to bring back to the board and probably is something that we'll be looking at in the coming months, talking a little bit about what Mr. Schein had mentioned in terms of trying to get some efficiencies and use technology to bring us forward and some processes that might be a little antiquated in the way we do it here or have been doing it, is the subject of superintendent evaluations and administration evaluations and whether we can get, start working with some different best practices and software platforms that might enable everyone to do this, which is extremely important, of course, and important for our administrators to get feedback from the board and also, you know, important for the board to be able to easily put together what the materials that we need to in order to give effective feedback. I think it would be helpful for us to start examining whether it's time to move away from, you know, Google Docs to something a little more robust when it comes to that process so that we can make it more effective and also not quite so drawn out. So that is something we'll be looking at. But Triple I was great. I want to mention also that many of our administrators were also able to attend, not just the board members, and I know that all of you attended sessions that were germane to your particular interests and things that you're trying to move forward. And I hope that those were also very useful for you. I'm sure they were. And it was, it was also just, you know, as Dr. Gravel mentioned, it's nice to spend some time away from the board table with folks that you do work with to learn a little bit more about them. And I think it'll help us all work more effectively together, which is to everyone's benefit. So that's terrific. Okay, moving on, unless anyone had another board report that they would like to give on another subject, not Triple I? Okay, in that case, we will move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is Item Five, Recognition of Community Visitors. And it's our public comment period. And we do have someone who will speak tonight, so I would like to say that with regard to public comment, this is an up to 30-minute period for public participation. Each individual may speak to the board for up to two minutes. We ask, but do not require that each speaker state their name, address and relationship to the district to facilitate follow-up if needed. All speakers are expected to conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. Please remember that this is a business meeting of the board. All comments should be addressed to the board and should concern board business. The board receives public comments as a source of information and considers them in making decisions and in the establishment of policies. It is our practice to take no action on any items nor to discuss any items members of the public have raised until the board has had time to gather information and then objectively discuss available options. However, during the meeting, the board, in its discretion, may choose to address an issue or correct any misinformation raised during public comment. While the board does not control the topics brought to its attention or the substance of the public comment, speakers are reminded that their comments are not automatically protected by any immunity or other legal protection. Having said all that, we have Mr. Williams Sights. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
You are, Madam President.
Thank you.
I brought 10 copies of my, my letter. I submitted a letter prior to, but I know you had a lot of stuff going on, so the recording secretary. I know I've got three minutes. I just had, I didn't include the email, but you could ask the superintendent for the email that I referenced. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that I explained in my letter a little more detailed. First, on the School Resource Officer Program, just a couple of updates on that. I did talk to superintendent about that. I would like to emphasize, you know, the superintendent told me that he's talking about updating it to comply with state law. As I said before, the last time that I was here, you know, that program is never going to be a workable program for a segment of your students and parents. The fact of the matter is, and as I explained in my letter just last week, the village board had a meeting about ICE and ICE programs. The village board does not take that issue in Glenview seriously. As a village Glenview police officer at Glenbrook South High School, I gave you a, an ordinance that was passed by the village board in Cook County, three different communities with demographics similar to Glenbrook South, Evanston, Arlington Heights and Wheeling, got rid of ICE from their districts. The reason why that's important is that police officer can be deputized. He can coordinate with it. And I would encourage you to look at the, at the video from the Glenview and you can see what I'm talking about. And the second thing I wanted to talk about was Cigno and the whole business of Cigno. I'm a property tax attorney. I've been doing a lot with, the reason why my letter was a little bit late is I had to do with property taxes. You know, you're doing a good job and I don't want to, but you know, property taxes are up 5.5% for you guys. You know, the property taxes are a big thing. And, you know, when I was, when I, you'll see the letter that I gave to the superintendent before they voted on the Cigno thing, to the village president and the trustees, you know, the $23.3 million. I wanted to know if there was any coordination since that building's across the street. And I did not, because of other issues that I had with the superintendent on the School Resource Officer Program, I did not contact him, but I did contact the park district. And there was some discussion. Now, I would say to you, I would suggest that if, in fact, you have, you are going to do something with that property, because at the last meeting, the village president cut off public, a public speaker saying, we haven't decided what we're going to do. Well, you know, you're going to spend $23.3 million and haven't decided what you're going to do. Well, you know what? Maybe you ought to say, you know, definitively, you know, hey, we are not a partner in this program that the village is doing. You've got other priorities, you've got other things going on. So I would suggest to you that, you know, they're not going to close on this until February, that you not be perceived as having, and I gave you an email from two days before this was announced, and I went to all the village budget meetings and this was not in there. So suit yourself, but I would suggest that you do not do business the way they do business. So that'd be my suggestion on Cigno. I'm going to do a Freedom of Information request tomorrow. I'm going to ask you for what was, what village's interactions on Cigno, but that's a lot of money. And, you know, I really would encourage you to be transparent. So those are my two comments. I wrote those in the letter. I'm sorry the letter didn't get to you with enough time to read it, but take a look at it. And I really, really encourage you to not, to not just do a new contract for the School Resource Officer Program, hire our security staff, you know, you've got the resources to do that. And Madam President, I know I went over my three minutes. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sights. Next, we have our consent agenda. Dr. Gravel, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
There have been no changes.
In that case, could I please have a motion regarding?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Glawacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
Our next item on the agenda is our Discussion Action Agenda. And we will begin with Item 7.1, the rescission of our intent to withdraw from the True North Education Cooperative 804. Dr. Gravel?
Thank you so much. I've spoken about this topic with our community, with the board, quite some time, but a really important step took place last Wednesday. It was at that meeting that the member districts of True North, so 18 districts unanimously agreed to modify what's known as the Articles of Agreement. The Articles of Agreement ultimately outline, similar to board policy, how the cooperative will function. And through those revisions, the cooperative directly addressed every concern that Glenbrook as a district, as well as many other member district, have expressed over the past several years. Before I go into those highlights, I do need to give tremendous credit to Mr. O'Hara, Mr. Glawacki, and previously, Mr. Dowdy, who has attended periodically True North. And oftentimes, to be very candid, was the lone dissenting vote on some very important topics that the district had been trying to bring up for several years. Those, or that feeling that we were not being heard, ultimately resulted around April 14th of this year, the board voting to move forward with the withdrawal from True North. Following our notification, several other districts followed until by June of 2025, every single district in the cooperative indicated their intent to withdraw, which would have led to the elimination of the cooperative. In August, a group of superintendents got together and challenged, or at least put the question on the table, if you will, which is, is it in the best interest of all of our students, all of our current children and future children of our communities, to eliminate True North as an option and as a service provider? Or is it in their best interest to, we use the term reimagine, what True North could look like? And following that conversation, in less than two work, two months, we got to work completely revising the model. And I just want to highlight a few of those changes. First of all, there was a recognition that when you are a part of the cooperative as was established, there was a large, not a cost of entry, but a cost of existence that for Glenbrook amounted to approximately $800,000 a year. And that was a cost that you had to pay as a district, even if you used zero services of the cooperative. And so from just a general perspective, when you have an $800,000 bill and you're not getting anything from it, that is not fiscally responsible. However, that's the model that the Finance Committee had adopted and even with Glenbrook trying to suggest options to change that, we were unsuccessful. One of the first decisions that was made by the Restructuring Committee or the Reimagining Committee is that membership fees would be eliminated. And so under the new model, written directly into the Articles of Agreement, that can only be amended by three-fourths of superintendents voting in that affirmative manner, there will be no membership fee. Another challenge was that in addition to membership fees, the cooperative had started levying what they referred to as assessments. So there was a facilities assessment to address aging infrastructure and things of that nature. Those types of assessments also cannot be levied moving forward without a three-fourths majority vote. And that three-fourths is important because that is a very high threshold to meet and ensures that an overwhelming majority of districts believe it's in the best interest of the cooperative to levy that fee. Another challenge that we identified was that program quality had transitioned to an area that, that superintendents and directors of special education were not comfortable with. And part of that was because of the lack of predictability in, of our, of their staff. Were they going to have a job this year and next year? So we had a high level of turnover, the lack of predictability on what school districts needed. And so we rebuilt the model for tuition and actually educating students in True North with a focus first and foremost on providing a world-class education for our students that have higher needs, while making sure we're implementing best practices and charging the appropriate tuition rate that pays for all of those services. In many ways, we use the example of a private therapeutic day school has a higher tuition amount because they need to pay for everything through their income they're bringing in, the tuition. That was not True North's model. True North would oftentimes try to run programs with very few students in them that were not self-sufficient, that were in some ways subsidizing other programs, but at a cost of not having sufficient personnel to operate those programs that had larger student populations at a high level. And so as part of, from a financial perspective, it is a self-sufficient tuition model or for services that are provided separate from tuition. Everything's all in and when a district makes a commitment, they're making a commitment for that year. So there's predictability of enrollment. To that end, there was a concept called Guaranteed Placement, which meant True North would guarantee access for spots for a student that might come up with a need in March or April. But what we actually found out was that was not being implemented at all grade levels. In fact, it was only available in some circumstances at the high school level and nearly never at the elementary level where the greatest needs were. So we've kind of gone away from that model and said, schools, you need, you need to really plan so that they can implement a zero-based budgeting approach and build a program with the size you need. And when you say you're committing to a service, you are committed to that service and have to pay for it. The final big change was that there was a view over time that True North positioned itself more as an independent school district as opposed to working hand in hand with its member districts, providing additional services that couldn't otherwise be provided in the local districts. That was exhibited through having a very large administrative structure, salary structures that were commiserate with very large high school districts. And over time, even creating a professional development department that much of their program was not focused on special education, but on general pedagogical approaches, which again, is not the area of focus for a special education joint agreement to our cooperative. And so we worked with our interim superintendents, who are, their names are Jim and Jimmy, just to be clear. We learned from individuals who have, you know, collectively 60 years of experience in cooperatives and built a very small administrative team that is in alignment with, with cooperatives that focus not on having a superintendent of a cooperative, but an executive director, which again, further illustrates that the cooperative is serving as an extension of the district, but not a standalone entity. With all of this work, again, we've gotten to a point where the Articles of Agreements have been ratified. All of the concerns that we've expressed have been addressed. And there was a final change made in the governance model that actually ensures that every school district has a voice at a table through their superintendents. The way True North was previously structured, the large group that got together on a monthly basis would include a representative from each Board of Education. So still representation for each district. The difference is, when we're talking about operating a cooperative, you need to have educational expertise at the table that is able to articulate what the needs of your district are and making sure that the cooperative is operating in alignment with those needs. So now there will be an executive committee that will include superintendents serving in leadership roles, as well as working directly on a regular basis with the cooperative leadership. And then a governing board will still exist that will involve board member representation, but that governing board will only meet two to four times a year. And that's because there's only certain items that a governing board needs to do, whereas other responsibilities are delegated to the executive committee. So with all of this done, I am very comfortable making the recommendation that remaining in True North provides to Glenbrook and Northfield Township students access to options and access to supports at no cost. access to options and access to supports at no cost unless we choose to use them. The only non-stated cost is as superintendent, I'll be serving on the executive committee and will need to devote time for that. However, I have volunteered this particular room to serve as the meeting location, so this is very convenient to come down to. But we've, we've come a long way. We are definitely not where we were when we took action. And should the district choose later on to withdraw? We, we were a part of the, the leaders in crafting legislation that was signed by the governor this summer that makes it very clear, we can withdraw without any additional approval processes outside of the State Board of Education's mandated process. It just requires an 18-month timeline. However, there's no cost to the district for remaining. We would just stop using services, file our intent to withdrawal, and then 18 months later, it would become official. So I am happy to answer any questions. I'm just so pleased with the work that we have been, or how we've been able to move forward and believe that what True North will look like in 12 months or 18 months from now could truly be remarkable and an asset for our students who need those services.
Thank you, Dr. Gravel. Questions from the board, Mr. O'Hara?
Yeah, real quick, I know that probably our biggest issue was, was the leaving issue, where it took everybody to vote, you know, everybody had to agree that, that someone could leave, so one person could stop us. You mentioned that the new way to leave is statutory?
That is correct.
Would there be any way to also write in, in case statute changes or, you know, would there be a way to put in the agreements as well as the way to leave in case statute changes that we, we have our own way? I mean?
So that, that's a great question. That's actually where the Articles of Agreement were in conflict with the law.
Correct.
So the law states the process to leave. Cooperatives cannot lessen or increase the process of leaving. So the way the Articles of Agreements are written right now, we don't mirror statute. We simply point to statute and say, we will follow the statutory provision. I would say that we do a really good job of monitoring statute. Should that, or, or forgive me, monitoring legislation. Should that change, it might immediately prompt us moving forward with our intent to withdraw. But unfortunately, in the articles, we can't have more stringent or less stringent requirements.
Okay.
Ms. Hope? Mr. Shun?
I just want to thank everybody who was involved in this now and leading up to today. It has been a long, long slog with True North and its predecessor-named organization. So I, I do have two questions. The first one is with the reinvigoration of True North, are there certain services that we have brought in-house that might be better provided back at True North? So that's my first question. And the second is you had provided, or the administration had provided cost projections for the impact on the district when we brought all of this in-house. And I, my, I guess it's more of a request, could we get an analysis of where we really fell out? We hired, we had a projection, we were going to hire this many people and it was going to cost this much, and those were projections, but then, then we have a couple of years of actuals. And then, you know, where do you see it going forward? Again, not looking for an answer tonight, but maybe a memo that kind of just re-characterizes it for, for the board. Thank you.
So let's address the first question, which is through the re-imagination of True North, might True North be a better setting for even some programs or students, individual students who are currently being served in the district program? When we opened our new transition services school, overwhelmingly, we brought all of our students back. And as we started to, to be very candid, operate a transition services school with a very wide range of student needs, we have identified students who would be better served in a True North program. And so we've already identified some students that would be better served in that environment that either made that transition now or preparing to make that transition now. Go ahead.
So were most of the students, I, I guess I didn't equate that, that most of the students were in the transition program?
So.
But we provided services sort of throughout.
Yeah, so our True North programs, if we go back, let's just say four years to make it easy. We had our TLS program. Those are the classrooms that were at Glenbrook South and Glenbrook North, staffed by True North, but housed in our two schools. That program came back first and relatively remains very similar to the program we've had. And, and outside of unique student needs, most students can be served here and would continue to be served here best in the least restrictive environment. For our transition services students, we had two groups. We had one group of students that were wholly served by True North in Highland Park at their facility. But we had a smaller group of students that were served out of our location above Little Louis. So it was kind of a blend. As we brought back students from the True North Transition Services, which again was in Highland Park this year, we have identified some students that would be better served in a, in that more well-equipped private therapeutic day school setting or public therapeutic day school setting. And with the changes happening in True North, we think that would be a good placement for them. So I think, to answer your question, there are some students who might very well be better served at True North. I don't know if we would ever move programs wholly back to True North. It would really be based on individual student needs. Very importantly, Mr. Shine has brought this up a few times about the importance of reconciling the transition of programs from True North in-house and understanding how financially that reconciles, student enrollment that reconciles and things of that nature. Dr. Cummings and Dr. Johns are working in partnership with an external program review that's being performed by the District Management Group that was approved last year. And we're actually almost here to the results. And I think that report will answer a lot of your questions. We've identified a few areas for growth such as appropriate staffing levels, appropriate supports for the staff, supports for students, programmatic structural recommendations. And I think it would be really beneficial, probably in the early spring, to even present a summary of that report to the board and have those questions directly answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Glawacki, did you have any questions?
I can put that in a podcast in the future.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, well, speaking of AI, I know we've probably had 300-plus pages of analysis done on True North and our use and everything. And I appreciate all the work that everybody's been doing, and especially the folks like yourself, most recently with kind of making some of the changes there that were well overdue. But I guess before, I'm comfortable in pivoting and taking this off the table of us withdrawing. I would need to see that analysis in the current context, kind of off of my colleagues' comments of, of the analysis. Where do we envision ourselves? Because this is a, potentially a huge commitment between our resources and supporting an outside group. And I know you are, your time is very valuable. It's maybe invaluable as well too, sort of having torn between organizations. I'm being mindful of that as well too. So it'd be helpful to have that additional analysis before I could vote one way or the other on changing focus with this. I wish the study would be out earlier. I know it's not until the spring. Is there any way we can hold off on voting to our position until after we have some of the study to see what our gaps are? Because I'd hate to be, I guess, paying twice. Depending, you know, we're paying for a service here and there to support it.
So we're, to clarify, we would not be paying anything to True North.
That's what I thought. Yeah, zero.
Unless we send students there and we just built a program here to support those students.
Well, but if we choose to send a student, that is an individualized decision made by a team that the board would not be engaged in.
Right.
So that would be an individual student need basis. I wouldn't be able to provide an analysis on that.
Or projections in terms of costs and everything? What I'm asking is the same analysis we did before about when we were moving the program back. Now moving it and having it in this co-environment where we've got True North and us, what does those projections look like going forward?
Yeah, to clarify, the district is intending to move no programs back to True North. The own, what we have access, what we have access to by remaining a member of True North is if we have individualized student needs that could best be served through a public therapeutic day school, True North remains an option for us, similar to other therapeutic day schools in the Northwest suburbs. There are times when one therapeutic day school option is better for a student than another that involves even the length of time a student might be in a vehicle to go from their home to the location. But in terms of specific costs, True North tuition is estimated at between $80,000 and $90,000. That is directly comparable to private therapeutic day school settings, which also we're, we're paying approximately $80,000 to $90,000 for.
And how many students we have enrolled in those currently and everything.
Dr. Cummings, do you recall the average number?
And, and again, I don't want me to put you guys on the spot.
No, it's perfectly okay.
This would be in the subsequent analysis, I think, that my colleague asked for. That would be very helpful to have that analysis.
Currently, approximately about 30 students we have placed right now in private therapeutic day schools.
And they would probably stay where they're at, not necessarily True North.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, there's several within, I would say, the Northwest suburbs that are utilized depending on what the needs are.
So this is where I'm just wrestling with that. We just, it's a wonderful program and don't get me wrong. But when we have limited resources and more and more limited resources, including our time, is, is there other options we should be looking at and be used as stewards of our resources to be more efficient?
Is, I'm sorry, just from my understanding, so basically True North is going to be another one of these programs we can use on the side. It's sort of like in our stable of programs we can use without any cost besides?
Tuition or services.
But besides your time potentially, which is a cost, as Pete, Pete mentions. Like you'd, you'd have to spend some time on this, but my understanding would be you wouldn't be day-to-day doing stuff for them. It'd be sort of once a month or, I mean, do you have a?
Yeah, so if the board's not familiar, just using me as an example, I serve as the district's representative to our liability consortium SCRAMP. I serve as our representative to our, our health benefits consortium NIHIP. All of those typically involve a two-hour meeting once a month where I represent the district's interests and then also bring back information for the respective areas. So this, that would be about the commitment.
So that, that'd basically be our cost that we're planning on spending right now for, for going, going forward with the new, new program. And they would just be an option for us to use with students who might need that.
Correct. If we weren't a member, we would not have guaranteed access to any services. I say guaranteed access because the way it's structured is non-member districts only get what's left after everyone else is committed and it's not predictable or guaranteed.
So I, I attended one of the meetings right about when it was turning around and there were still a few people that were resisting. And I went there knowing one of the other people that had been more on the resistance side with kind of a cynicism or skepticism. And I, what I listened to was like, it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, it costs us nothing. It's maybe a couple hours of time, right? But it's also good for you because you're probably picking up, meet with other superintendents. It's great best practices, it's great growth, it's great development, it's great networking, right? With people that are here in our own area. And it just gives us another option for our kids. So is it good for the kiddos? And does it cost us anything more? It's rhetorical, I guess.
Yep. So to be clear, remaining a member of True North costs nothing. Rescinding our intent to withdraw would ultimately mean if we wanted to withdraw, there would be an 18-month period that you would have to wait. So there's, there's a waiting period. I would argue from a fiduciary standpoint, if there was an expense with that waiting period, then there would be an understanding of why, why you might want to process through leaving or what have you. But because there's no financial extent, expense, and all it does is provide us an option, I'm supportive of the recommendation to rescind.
And excuse, excuse me.
Follow-up question on the resources.
One more question.
I was up still. Before I lose control of the room. Assets. Don't we also have eyes to assets too?
Remaining a member, should the organization dissolve, provides the district entitlement to a proportion of assets once all liabilities are paid for. If we withdraw, we lose any access to assets. Now, on the flip side, if you withdraw and you lose access to assets as part of the new Articles of Agreement, you also lose the responsibility to pay future liabilities, which was originally estimated for Glenbrook at approximately $3 million. So by not leaving, you also are not responsible for any of those liabilities. You did ask, is it best for kids?
Yeah.
Was an important question. I will tell you, one of the reasons why I was invited to the table to do the reimagining is because when I heard directly from our feeder school districts, specifically District 27, 28, 30, and 31, they rely upon True North for their students. And because their students are our students, yes, I believe it's best for students.
That's what I thought. So last question, of the ones that were resisting or removing, there's, I think there were still a few people left when I went back there in the summer. Are they still leaving or are they, is anybody leaving or has everybody decided to stay? Or where, what was, what's the story with the rest of it?
Out of 18 member districts, two districts said they did not, or said something other than stay. That was District 34, which has continued their desire to move forward with full withdrawal. And I anticipate that that will move forward with that, like that. And then Bannockburn, I'm forgetting their district number, did intend that they were still contemplating whether to withdraw or remain. However, in subsequent conversations at the conference, I believe that they are intending to remain. I, I think there was just.
What's the turnaround of that? There was how many that were going to be leaving and how many, and now one's just leaving?
Oh, originally 18 members were leaving. And now we're down to one at most, two. Assuming Glenbrook remains, to be clear. Mr. Glawacki did ask, is there a way to slow down or get the report? I just want to.
Or speed up the report.
Or speed up the report.
Yeah, that we can at least get a, see where we compare and how this supplements us.
The report is focused on a program evaluation of Glenbrook. And we do have a report that we can share that we actually had prepared for the Regional Office of Education, which was a requirement of withdrawing that shows our program capacity. Dr. Cummings, do you think that would be in a spot for us to share in the near future?
Being written for the state to withdraw? I don't know the status, but I would assume so.
So we can double-check with Dr. Johns to share that with the board? That's one option. The, the program analysis though, is based on Glenbrook's program to improve them. Not again about shifting resources anywhere. That will not be ready until closer to January. But we can share the, our capacity report that was drafted with the board to give a restrictive.
I know it'd be convenient for them to get the letter from us tomorrow saying we're staying or not. But is there a final deadline or something that?
It is by the end of December.
End of December.
I'm just making a note for the capacity report.
How many meetings do we have in December?
One.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
The eighth.
So it's, it's by the eighth for us, is what you're saying.
Yes, this has, we have to decide on the eighth, our next meeting. Because that is our only meeting before December.
So it won't go on the consent agenda then, obviously, or can it?
I, I cannot, I don't, if Mr. Glawacki doesn't feel comfortable with where we are at the end of this discussion, then we cannot put it on the consent agenda.
I'd like to have it as a discussion item with the additional analysis that you kind of asked for.
I do think. I do think, I just, just to clarify, just to make sure that we are all understanding and that I'm understanding what you're asking for, Mr. Galakki. What, what, what? Dr. Gravel is, is recommending is that we. Negate our rescission essentially and stay in. True North. But that does not require us to pay any money. Or to put in anything. Or to make any decision about using any service.
That's correct.
Other than Dr. Gravel continuing to serve on the executive committee there.
Correct.
If we choose not to use any service, we pay nothing.
That is correct.
And that could continue indefinitely. There could, we could just be part of the consortium, pay nothing. Do not use the services and just have that ride for as long as we need to. And we could though, if we had a particular student who hadn't, their team decided that True North was a good placement for them, we would have the opportunity. To pay the going market rate to have that student use their service.
That is correct.
So I'm, I guess.
Can I add to that too, Sandy? And it's really good for our feeder schools because they don't have that. And that's, that's a really important piece that I don't want to be missed.
Correct, I agree, because those, as Dr. Gravel points out, those are our kids, they'll be coming to two twenty five. So they just are in a different place right now, but they're going to be here eventually. So I guess what I'm, when you ask for. A, an analysis of. The cost versus cost, I mean, what, what cost? There's no cost.
Well, we were looking at what our costs were and what. Usage of programs were and all the different programs over the years. So we did a number of trend analysis and a lot of details that went into that. That I would like to know, I guess, what are the new projections under this? What's the continuation of that look like? Because I'm not feeling equipped enough to make a decision one way or the other in terms of this at this point.
And I could understand why that would be problematic if we were thinking that we would. Be actually utilizing services sometime soon. I think what you're asking for is an analysis of what, of our, our costs, of our program and whatever happens, we're still going to have our program. All, all True North does is give us an, an option that we don't even have to take.
But we, I guess the part I'm having an issue with is we invested in a transitional program here based on the understanding of. True North not meeting our needs any further and everything. We're saying now True North can meet those needs. So what I'm wrestling with is there's.
I, I understand, yeah, I understand it differently. I understand it that. The, True North will now be a other, another option like the other options that we currently already use. So it's just in addition, not a cost of more, right? Because we have other people at other school, other, that are being, and it's very comparable in. Cost and actually we probably have a better connection with True North than we do with those others. So again, I thought it might be, it's probably not costing us anymore and it's probably better for the kids.
The question I had, I guess flipping around, then should we put the, our transitional program back on the table to review that together? That's.
But that's a different question than whether or not we should rescind our.
Because that's already serving a purpose and we're a people there that are doing well, so.
Well, so i- if, if we do. Not put it on a consent, we would be voting on it on the eighth anyway, right?
Correct.
I'm comfortable with that with the discussion too, yeah. I mean, if you feel like we need more discussion, but.
Completely comfortable with that.
But we do need to vote.
Correct.
But we won't have a definitive report. By the next meeting when we're going to vote. I'm comfortable with that, but we shouldn't. Think we were going to have information.
That we don't, right.
No, that, that's just not going to be, excuse me, that's not going to be ready. I mean, they, they, they don't have time and it's on the agenda. It seems like there's not a lot of downside for us to do this. That's the. I mean, how are we?
And, and that's fine.
How are we like hurt by do, by doing it? I mean, I, there are a number of areas to clarify. You know, many of us have brought up questions, but I don't see that it's central to the decision here. It's just information that would be good and might help us in our, going forward. But. I, I'm just trying to understand, like what? What would we learn that might? Mr. Galakki, make you think this is not. Like we wouldn't want to agree to, to rescind.
I, I guess I have not had the opportunity, we went through detailed item by item, bullet by bullet, looking at why we wanted to pull out of True North before. We are now, have a simple piece here, these are the couple of bullets. I would just like to put it in the same context as when we did the review initially and that would just help me. That's my request.
I think that's, that's, that makes perfect sense and we can certainly talk about it more at the next meeting, but I think, you know, the, the difference between now and then is. Then we were paying eight hundred thousand dollars a year for nothing and this is we pay nothing for nothing. But we pay something for something and that just seems like a much better place.
If that's added as an amendment to the piece, that's wonderful.
I mean, our goal for, for years was to, to turn it into a pay as you go model. I mean, this is, this is just in its simplest form, it's like we want services, we pay for them, we knew it would cost more. For the particular services if we did that. But we didn't have that loaded upfront cost. Which was just viewed to be incredibly unfair. You, I guess everybody understands that, but it's hard to see the downside.
Yeah, I mean. We're now, no longer paying the eight hundred thousand, right? Which is great. We are taking care of our feeder schools because if those kids come up here. Better adjusted. It's better for us, it's better for them. And it's not costing us anymore.
Dr. Gravel. Do you, can you comment? Or are you comfortable commenting on why District thirty four? Would want to go the other way? Because they're, you know, they're, they are GBS basically. I mean, they're ninety something percent and it's, I'm surprised to hear that.
I, I don't want to inappropriately speak for them, but I, I think. It was fairly well shared in the room that they had. Travelled down this journey for several years and I think to. And, and they, they have received full approval to, to withdraw and leave. And I think to, to reverse just wasn't. Wasn't okay for them.
Is there an opportunity?
The horse is out of the barn.
Sounds like it. Is there an opportunity in the future for them to join, should they, should they so choose?
Yeah, so in fact, there's already two other districts that are interested in joining. That are outside of the current service area, so I, I think there would be a pathway back for them if they would like. What I intend and are, and in. Adding to the memo and I would ask for consent from the board to make sure I'm in alignment with this. Is I will articulate, I, I mentioned it in some bullet points that. The direct savings to the district will be just in membership fees, six hundred and twenty three, four hundred and twelve dollars. That's before the facilities of assessment of approximately the two hundred thousand. But I'll articulate the savings. By rescinding or remaining, how there's no difference, there's still a savings. I will clarify that there is a direct benefit to our students of. Maintaining additional options for our kiddos who need those options. At some point during their educational journey. And remaining a member provides access to that option. I'll also articulate that there is a direct benefit for continuity of the learning experience for our students in our feeder districts. That are currently utilizing those services to, if those services are the most appropriate for them, to maintain them. So that would be what I would be seeking to clarify. In the memo.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so that will come back on our December eighth discussion agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
Did we have any other thoughts or comments on the True North agenda item? Okay, the next item for our discussion is seven point two, the Glenn Brook South STEM Booster Club.
So there has only been two new booster clubs in my eleven years of being in the district. So it's not something we see often, that's why we brought it full to the board to hear about it. And to share a little background, I'm going to ask Dr. Georges to introduce the potential new Glenn Brook South STEM Booster Club.
Good evening. So I was approached by an extraordinary group of parents who are very passionate. About supporting STEM learning at Glenn Brook South. Particularly surrounding some of our extracurricular groups, for example, Vex Robotics. That recently was competing at the national level in their competitions. To be very direct, we had some recent changes in how much the Board of Education supports student travel. And that Vex Robotics program and other STEM programs were directly impacted by that. So this booster club, very similar to an athletic booster club or a fine arts booster club, would like to do fundraising. To be able to support our students in purchasing additional supply and equipment to make. Some of our competition robots more fancier competitive. They've also discussed a vision of being able to support fundraising for some additional equipment that would be needed in some of our STEM spaces. And just to be able to overall support programming such as the SCLC program at Glenn Brook South and the students. That have passion in those courses and the, all of the, the merit of extracurriculars that are associated with that. They are a very supportive and passionate group. And they put together this proposal and I am in support of it if, if the board is.
From a procedural standpoint, we have a board policy. This is one that will be revised in the new, the new policy manual. It's a weird title of, I always forget if it's auxiliary adult or adult auxiliary organizations, also known as parent group. And before the school district can recognize a parent group, it does require the board to approve it. Approving it simply recognizes them, provides them access to facility space. We do set up what we call an activity account in our agency fund to allow them to collect parent dues or donations. And then we assist with writing out checks. And then with all of our parent groups, we've actually worked with them to establish their own five oh one C three status. So we've become pretty good at that. And we would assist them through that process and it just provides another option. This, this would be one of our, well, this would be our first. Science-based or engineering-based booster club and perhaps it could be the start of something really cool across the district. I'm fully in support.
Did any board member have any questions?
I think it's great.
We'll expect to see a GBN one soon.
Okay. Sounds like we have some consensus on this one. Would this be something that could come back on consent?
This certainly can come back on consent, yes.
Excellent. No, that sounds terrific. I did see the robots on CBS.
They did a great job. All of our students did a great job. Yes, that was fantastic.
Excellent. Okay, ooh, this is a fun one. We're going to talk about our twenty six, twenty seven curricular change proposals.
Too much anticipation.
I am excited.
Nervous now, hold on.
Before you, you talk about that, I just want you to know the peach pear.
That's why it's the only one left in there.
And on that note, as Mr. Bre tag is preparing to approach the podium. We have.
That was a public service announcement.
I, I want to point out a few things. First, each of the board members in front of you, courtesy of Mr. Bre Tag's efforts this afternoon. Has a copy of the twenty twenty six to twenty twenty seven course guide. This document is also available online through the Board of Education's website as well as in a nice course guide section. That is on the Glenn Brook North and Glenn Brook South website. Each year, we go through a process of reviewing the courses that we offer. Determine opportunities and changes that need to be made. Identify potentially new courses. And in some years, even what we refer to as archiving different courses and we'll talk a little more about that in a future meeting. But this year we have some really exciting offerings and I want to also recognize that we are fortunate to be graced with also the presence of Dr. Joyce Kim, our Associate Principal of Teaching and Learning over at Glenn Brook South. And Dr. Maria Vasilopoulos, our Associate Principal of Teaching and Learning over at Glenn Brook North to support the presentation. There is a lot of information that's before you. And the memo does a nice job outlining it. I've asked Mr. Bre Tag to offer. Or practice the art, a little bit of brevity and then open up for questions for everyone here. So Mr. Bre Tag, the challenge has been presented.
The gauntlet is laid, the three minutes is rolling. So, uh, good evening. Just, uh, just to give everyone a quick thirty second preview of what this process entails. It's highly collaborative. It starts at the department level with our course teams. They look at specifically the curriculum improvement process, which you heard about earlier this year. What did they identify? What does the strategic plan outline? And then there's a host of things they go through. From alignment with their cross building partnerships to see if there's possibilities there, all the way through insight meetings with my colleagues behind you. The Student Services Department, college counselors. It's a robust process. It is a. For lack of a better word, fun yet intense process as they look at what is the impact of a specific word in a title or in a description? And all in all, what it leads to is a formal process at the building where they come together. As an instructional leadership team. And they make a decision. They publicly share like this, what they're proposing, what they've learned and why they're doing it. And there's not a flag up and down vote or a clicker up and down vote, but there is a lot of head nodding or a lot of head shaking. And then we go from there to finally finalizing at the district administrative team level. What that led to this year is. Seven new courses coming forward. The first two are both dual credit. What's exciting about that is. You heard about this with our English ISs. Who talked about last year, they brought forward English Composition one oh one. Some of you may remember going, what is a one, why are we one oh one? It's College one oh one. And then the second part of that, that's a semester course, now our students will be able to select speech. So that would, in essence, give their first year of gen ed requirements in English. So we're also, that's not to discredit the other ones up there, this will be our first real nice. General Ed Science Course Opportunity, Physical Geology. And then some other new courses that have come forward. In particular, I want to highlight that astronomy. That was a two-year process in partnership across both buildings with the teachers and the department chairs. To really work through this process of saying, what would an astronomy sequence look like in our district? And then finally, American Sign Language. We now have all of our languages with the rigorous opportunity for honors level. So that was another important move for us. As always, we talk about alignment. Sometimes we bring forward courses that we do not have alignment in. And we always tell you, but we're working towards that. What would that take? This year, you will see that we have yoga two, which our physical education instructional supervisors talked about. That it had started at one building while the other learned about it. We now will be bringing that forward, so there is the same sequence in both buildings. And our radio broadcast, or excuse me, radio production, podcasting, sports media, television and film are now aligned in title. In curriculum and in offerings, including their honors level work. Last but not least, you have in front of you. In my last fifteen seconds, you have the course guide as Cedric Gravel mentioned. That has a host of changes. I want to highlight a few at the very top. That we did put in place. A full listing of our dual credit offerings and our advanced placement courses. That also allow you to see what is the Glenn Brook title versus the Oakden title or what is the advanced placement title? In the Glenn Brooks versus the College Board, so you can see a nice comparison. And also, we added two real important pieces of information for our families and our staff for that matter. Most courses now have an additional information section that allows us to have clarity if you're looking for what is a dual credit. What has honors ability in it, that information clearly outlined. And last but not least, clarity, we know we're in. We have one more real deep year after next year. For the APA cohort versus our legacy cohort. So really have, helping our families understand when a course may be only offered for our APA group. Or our legacy group, which again, just as a reminder, our current freshmen are our first APA. Cohort where everyone else, we decided to maintain the status quo structure. So with that, my colleagues are going to step up. I think I met my three minute mark. And we will take any questions or comments.
And before the board asks some questions, I just want to highlight. The important process of governance that we actually just experienced a few moments ago. But it ties to that first bullet point that Mr. Bre Tag has. In a completely, I was going to say unrelated, but it's really related. So in a separate presentation a few weeks ago. The board had an opportunity to learn. the board had an opportunity to learn more about our AP courses and our dual credit courses that we currently have. And one of the board members asked a question. How many AP classes and how many dual credit classes do we have? And then that got a little deeper. How many do we have at North? How many do we have at South? And so on and so forth. That question led to a wonderful conversation. We, we thought it might start being very simple, just working with Carol and her team to get it on the website. And then we realized that, my gosh, there's, there's some inconsistencies here based on Oakden titles versus our titles. There's some inconsistencies based on how the AP or the College Board defines AP testing course titles versus how we label them. And then in a true Glenbrook enriched honors course, it's not just one AP test you can take. It can be two AP tests, all sorts of stuff. Getting to the point of, one of the reasons why we present things two times at the board is truly to get feedback, to make it even better, not just for the board, but also for the community as a whole. So as a result of that one comment, we identified a gap in our communication that will really serve as a great resource for our families, especially those who are beginning to prepare or currently navigating the college application process that need to know the alignment of these different things. And now it's not only on our website, but it's also in that beautiful small course guide that's sitting in front of you. So thank you to the board for asking the questions. And now that's your tee up to ask some more questions to see how we can make it better.
Okay, no pressure, Mr. O'Hara. Do you have a groundbreaking transformational question for us?
Sure. No, thank you for the work. I love the fact that we get, I mean, it kind of makes me want to go back to school and do some studying. I mean, the astronomy course alone is awesome. I guess this is probably just a misprint or something, but you have Mandarin Chinese not being offered at GBS until the fourth year? So I assume it's probably offered all four years at GBS?
To look at that as a.
We were talking a long time about True North. I don't think that's transformational though. I think that's just a misprint.
That could be a misprint, yes. We will look at that.
Oh, but it's offered only at GBN until it gets to the fourth year and then it's suddenly offered it.
I'm sorry, I can go ahead and answer that as I'm looking at the three of them. Okay, so languages are very difficult to maintain full courses at both buildings. And we have watched a progression of not enough students at Glenbrook South being interested in Mandarin to support one whole section. So starting two years ago, we had begun sending North, excuse me, South students to North because their Mandarin Chinese program was larger. That is following the natural progression of that cohort of children getting accustomed to traveling to North for that language. Very similar things have been happening the other way. For example, Spanish for Heritage learners only takes place at South. This kind of mutual partnership between Glenbrook North and Glenbrook South ensures that we get to be one of the best schools in the state in terms of offering the large variety of languages, but to ensure that the programs are sufficient class sizes to run. So we are hosting it senior year because we do have a large enough cohort. But that's the last class that had the large enough cohort. So moving forward, go to North, yes.
But I think what you mentioned, there is just another place where maybe in our additional information, we need to clean that up. Yeah, I think that's a real, again, finding those little pieces tell us, yep.
Do we mention somewhere, because Barb, you raised a great point. I was going to ask about that. Do we mention somewhere that you can take a course, like even if it says GBN, if you're like, I really want to do Mandarin and you're coming from Glenview? Like, how is that mentioned in this?
So.
From a course guide perspective.
Yeah, from the course guide perspective, we're very clear on where the course is offered and whether it's offered at both schools or not. We tend to, we obviously want our students to find courses. A lot of that is tied to programs. For instance, as Dr. George just mentioned, with languages, we want to ensure that program sequence is available. We tend to have conversations at the student services level if there are one-off courses that are offered at one building or the other, staying, understanding the impact on their schedule if they travel. There are opportunities. That's why we're trying to get alignment as best we can. A lot of other areas would be if a facilities was different that, for instance, if we are talking about welding at one building or the other. So it's, it's program specific, but there are opportunities to move.
Well, how would a parent know? I mean, is that?
That goes in the, in the counseling area in the selection of courses during their four-year planning process. Sorry, personalized learning process.
No, no, that's great. I, I would suggest you put it in here too, just in case the counselor forgets or, you know, like it's best to have it.
Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation up in the, in the front end to understand if you notice a course that's only offered at one school, what is the process? I think it's a great art, great addition.
Yeah, we're going to asterisk by those and stuff.
Additional information would be the, the new way to avoid multiple asterisks.
You can, you can give me credit.
We have a lot of asterisks these days.
Yes.
Languages too. It depends on which middle school, oh, sorry. It depends on which middle schools offer the languages and it depends on the middle school. So there is a, a school that teaches Mandarin Chinese, but most of the schools for that district go to North. And then for SHL, we have a large feeder school. Yes, population who is very interested in SHL because they've had that in their middle schools and a lot of those students come to South. So I just wanted to explain sometimes it's also the middle school programming.
Ms. Hope?
I know you were saying a little bit about the timing of all of this and I would just love to hear, like I know the personalized learning conversations already happened before the new course guide was approved and with the semester changes and you were talking a little bit about it looking different next year. Can you just remind me?
Sure. So right now, as we know, that we're, we're underway with this process. So as these courses come forward, this has been the traditional timeline we have structured. In fact, we once had these due in February, even though the courses would be ready to go a few months later. So we moved it up to provide more opportunities, greater clarity in the, in the counseling area. However, what we have found with the move to final exams before break, additional work that we would be reworking our timeline that new courses would be due in the second semester and we would be bringing them to this table and, or this committee in May so that we would be ready for the summer. So that when our folks came back and we had the process beginning in student services, our course guide would be printed, all of our students would have access to it. And it would be for the following August that those courses would be implemented. This is a common process in other districts, especially those districts that have finals before break. And they're, so as we make the transition in our schedule, it's the right time to make the transition in this process to afford greater alignment so that our freshmen, when they're beginning their process, this catalog's in the hands of their families at least a month and a half ahead of time.
I, I heard a lot about the standardization process between the two schools in particular, where historically one school has offered a semester-long course where the other has offered a year-long course from a lot of GEA members and teachers. I'm curious how the standardizations that happened for this year are handled by the teachers or how they felt about it and how many are left to kind of still work toward in the future where they're just not balanced in that way.
Sure. So we have, this year, as you can see, we had just a few that were outstanding. In particular, in the fine arts area and the broadcasting, that was the heaviest area. Astronomy was another area in science. We still have a roughly 10% difference between the buildings. And for some of those, there's good reason. We have differences in dual credit. That can come down to the credentials for the teachers and what's available in terms of facilities. We also have circumstances that, quite frankly, we have historical offerings that meet the needs of individual or groups of students that have created differences in those structures. We have those pieces. We've had conversations. At this point, I think we've reached a strong alignment structure in that 90%. And those conversations in those other areas, I hate to continue to go back to the curriculum mapping, but until we have strong curriculum mapping across those structures, it's really difficult for our ISs to navigate those complex conversations that have 30-year history of courses. Dr. Gravel had mentioned the idea of archiving courses. One of the things that is really our next step is to not only think about what are our new courses, but what are the courses we might consider removing or archiving? That's a lot of where that 10% lands right now. Courses that we have a history behind, we have a lot of value in what they have brought, but perhaps they haven't run in a few years. How do we want to approach those? And that will be the next real alignment issue for us or target for us.
Mr. Shine?
Actually, that was, you know, sort of my takeaway is just how extensive this catalog is. And in thinking about that is really, how many of these courses exist only in this book? And that's, I'm curious then if, if these are the universe of potential offerings. And I don't know how many are in here. How many are we really, are we really offering? And do, to your point, and I, do we need to call the herd a little bit here, which I imagine there are staff highly invested in some of these courses? Making their, you know, sunsetting quite a challenge.
Correct. I, I think that's, that's the easiest answer for you and my time period is correct.
Like, it's great to have all this. It looks like a university. A nice mid-sized college would probably be happy to have a course catalog that looks like this. But I'm not sure it helps our families that much if, if there a number of these courses where it's highly unlikely that we would actually offer them.
I, I think a lot of these conversations start with data. So as we look at trends and what classes are running, that will be part of our spring work is to put that data into the, the hands of our ISs and begin having those conversations. These, as you know, are, are not easy conversations. They're not short conversations. They require time. They require conversations about impact, about curriculum. And those are the, those need to begin and that's the intention of this spring.
Maybe as an interim, I mean, we have all kinds of asterisks and things in here, but just have some kind of a code or, you know, a symbol that says, you know, may not be offered or whatever. So you don't necessarily have to take it out and eliminate it because maybe there would be an interest or, or may not be offered, you know, please speak to your counselor, you know, or something. So, so maybe there is really, you know, an interest hiding there and we would then want to offer it, but to the point of, you know. So, anyway.
As a follow-up for the spring, Mr. Shine, you asked a question which, again, I don't think we've articulated in the document, which is, how many total courses do we offer? Just from a sheer numbers standpoint, we've, we've now done that for AP. We've done that for dual credit. So that's, that's a takeaway. And the second takeaway is I will work with the team after registration and sectioning is primarily done. Let's say after spring break. And we'll bring forth a report of the courses that do not run, which I think is important information for us, not only to have today, but for us to monitor moving forward.
Thanks, Skip. For those great questions. Mr. Glouacki, did you have any questions?
Again, kudos, the wonderful work you guys in assembling this. I know it's been a labor, I don't know of love, but a labor to pull this all together. It's really, going back to my kids there now at the other end of the spectrum, would have been very helpful to guide them through this. And so, thank you.
Mr. Downey?
No, I'll echo, great work, you know, I'll steal his line saying, what can we do to support you? You know, I guess, I guess I have two questions, one being that and the other one being regarding multi-variable calculus and linear algebra. Can you tell me the learning objectives in your products and norm orth analogy and linear dynamic systems?
Dr. Vassalopoulos.
I'm joking. I'm joking. No, I'm joking.
I actually built that curriculum after Anthony played.
Oh, okay.
No, awesome work. Let us know what we can do to support you.
This, this is terrific, very interesting reading. I just want to understand, I guess, you know, I personally love the binder and I will take it and put it with all of my other binders, but I know some people enjoy doing these things online. Is all of this clickable and reachable? And like, when you say additional information, it's a hyperlink to additional information, all that? Is that the way it works?
We have.
Do we have a podcast?
We have not done a podcast on this. I will say that one of the things we did a lot of work this year in terms of cleanup is aligning this paper copy, which we will have a copy for all incoming families. That we also made sure that the digital version of this aligns and then it mirrors School Links. So that for our families, from the language on here to the language in School Links, to how it looks in School Links, how the course sequences at the start. You could pull up the math one, not to bring math back up again, on page 72, how that lays out. So that as a family goes, they're moving horizontally through. That was the goal is to ensure that there's a consistent user experience, whether you're print or you're digital. And to our communication teams, thank you so much. They built out the website to ensure that the navigation of print and digital was really clear and understanding that it's a seamless, whatever you prefer, you will have the same user experience. That was really important. We received a lot of positive feedback, but also it would be nice if it operated the same. And we've done the best we can with making that alignment.
That's terrific. I, I'm sure that's much appreciated because, you know, it, it is obviously a big project to have that consistent across different platforms. But so essential because if you have inconsistencies, that's going to cause a lot of confusion and, you know, it's a lot of information already to process without having to navigate little things that, are you going to track down a counselor to get this answer? You know, that kind of thing. So that, that's great to hear. As far as what we are, you are asking for the board tonight. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about that. There, you are asking the board to approve these particular curricular changes. That is adding courses and the modifications to align the courses that you've laid out here.
So there's no action requested tonight. It would come back on consent. It also would have the board approve the course guide in its entirety.
So are, is everyone feeling, feeling, do we have consensus that that makes sense to have on the consent agenda for our next meeting? Are we comfortable with that? Okay, great. Well, thank you so much.
I just want to thank you and share one more thing that, two questions that came up was, how are people feeling about the alignment and what can we do as the board to support you? And this is my second year. And just seeing the difference in alignment and the energy and the, the feelings behind coming together and collaborating across town has been very different this year, especially with the time that we've gotten with PLC work. And so I just want to thank you for the time that we have for professional collaboration, PLC work. And they can Zoom or they can, they can make sure that they use that time for connecting. And also March Institute Day has been really helpful. So these are the, the different avenues that people have really learned of across town colleagues and, and really gaining traction and friendship and collegiality. So I just want to thank you for, for that time one more time.
Thank you. That is good to hear. Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, I think that brings us to a resolution authorizing intervention in property tax assessment proceedings, which sounds less fun. I don't know. I'm just going to say it.
Ms. Tarver is not able to be here with us this evening, so I'm going to take this one for her. Every few years, we do need to formally present a resolution to the Board of Education that authorizes our firm, which is Hous. authorizes our firm, which is Houser, Izzel, Patraka, I'm missing one, not your name. Thank you. They ultimately assist not just Glenbrook, but they assist all of the township school districts in navigating property tax appeals. Property tax appeals is an important responsibility of all taxing bodies, and that's why we work together. These are individuals who ultimately are not per se appealing the district, they're appealing the assessors' assessment of, of large businesses, industrial complexes, and sometimes residential homes. We tend only to get involved when the difference of an appeal would result in a net loss to the district in $100,000 or more. And there's probably about 30 to 45 cases a year that we navigate. Most of our property tax objections, having done this for about 10 years, are from the same large companies every year. So we've kind of been used to doing that. So ultimately, this would come back to the board on consent. Again, it just authorizes the firm to represent us, which they have probably for 20 to 30 years.
I'll just throw it out to any member who has a question or concern about continuing, continuing what seems to be a long-established process for us. Okay, so we'll bring it back on consent.
Thank you all.
That brings us then to possible topics for future board meetings. And Dr. Gravell and I talked about a couple that we have went ahead and listed here, and he can elaborate on those for us.
Certainly. So a few weeks ago, maybe two, I shared with the board a link to the Diligent Community website, as well as a new portion of the district website that gives our entire community access to a progress report, if you will, on our strategic planning goals. For example, even if you're in Diligent right now for a board agenda, you'll notice we have agenda items, and then we have attachments, and then goals that are listed as focus areas. Every time we present something to the board, we are tagging what we're doing directly to the strategic plan, and that instantly creates a dashboard of progress. What I'll be working with the team as we move into the second semester of the school year, and we'll give a little preview of this next week, is what, what is our percentage of completion? The strategic plan has been in place last year and has been in place this year. We've talked a lot about it this year, but are we at 100% on the goal? For example, a specific focus area is about creating personalized learning plans for our students. And Dr. Cummings will talk about that next week and share that we are at 100% completion for our freshman class. That means that that part perhaps might have reached a completion level. On the other hand, we are continuing to navigate through. Just today, Dr. Romano presented a proposal for creating a bit of a professional development opportunity for our staff members that are interested in learning the real nitty-gritty of what it means to be an administrator. And so she's created a pipeline program, if you will, that we're, we're still working on and will work through in the spring for implementation next year. So that we've made progress on, but we're not completed on. So we'll get, we'll go through some of those updates. I really want to encourage the board to take an opportunity, look at that dashboard, give some thoughts to conversations you've had with community members, students, parents, staff members. Maybe you want to kind of highlight some things that maybe you, you're just curious of, what's our status on? We may not have all the answers next time we come together, but I hope we'll start to see how this strategic plan that we adopted in 2024, how it's really coming to fruition. And it's very cool. And then, to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be equally as excited as some members of the policy committee, Dr. Johns is going to give this lovely update on the Policy Manual Modernization Project for Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8. That includes wonderful, exciting things such as the organization of the school district, community relations, don't forget the structure of the Board of Education, as well as operational topics and general school administration. So we'll give that little overview. For some reason, our public open meetings for policy have not been hugely attended by members of the community, but we're going to keep sharing information because the board is actually going to move forward with adopting some of these sections that have been worked on in the near future. And why we're starting with 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8 is they are the shortest sections, and most of those sections, the majority of the board here has been part of revising over the last two years. So we're already really in alignment. The largest sections of the policy manual are Personnel, Students, and Instruction, 5, 6, and 7, and those have the greatest area for growth in terms of updating to modern language. So we'll be keeping on working through that. So for anyone who's excited and joining the policy effort, there will be a policy committee meeting right before next board meeting, and you are all welcome to be there. There will be cookies. So I encourage you to join.
And that will be a, a working group meeting for the committee and before we have our next meeting with the IS, IASB team from press that we're, we're sort of chunking the work for the policy, but we want to be sure that, you know, if you, even if you don't have time to join us at our meetings, that you're kept up to date on our progress so that at the end of this process, when we have the full policy manual revised, we don't have to drop in a massive amount of information on you. You've had the opportunity to keep up with it. We just want to make sure that the full board is in a position to feel fully up to date on the work so that when it comes time to vote on the policy manual, it's, it's not a huge slog for you that you'll have been able to follow along. Okay. And I do believe that we will have a closed session this evening, and we will have action coming out of the closed section this evening. So.
Other proposed topics?
Oh, of course, I'm so sorry.
And I don't know if these are proposed topics, or I just need to understand where we discuss them, but I, I would love to continue the conversation or understand the next steps for adding students to the board or what that can look like. I think that would be really interesting.
I feel as if that is a calendar for.
Communications Committee, end of January.
Okay. And then I keep coming back to some of what was shared at a previous board meeting and then at the Parents Association meeting at GBN that I went to, and it was such a nice presentation about all of the data we're collecting about student engagement and a lot of the growth that we've experienced. And I'm, I, I just keep thinking about sort of the percentage of kids who are feeling not a sense of belonging and who are not feeling a growth mindset. And you know that we're doing a lot of things to sort of try and improve those numbers, and I'd love to hear more about kind of detail what, what we're thinking of doing or what are some of those barriers or to help problem solve around that. I don't know if that's something we have time for, but.
We absolutely have time for that. A real good time might be towards the end of January, if not very early February. Each year, the board is familiar with the term five essentials, the, the climate survey that's offered to staff, students, as well as parents. And we just talked today about how we're switching current of five essentials to our panorama survey, which is the survey that we use to gather the information. Perhaps as part of launching that window, which is at the beginning of February, we can give a little preview of the data we get from it, and we can talk about how we actionize it.
Did any other board member have a, a topic to suggest for future board meetings? So sorry, Ms. Hope. Of course.
Yeah, I would love to learn a little bit about college counseling.
Okay.
I would suggest a good time for that would be around the April timeline.
That's okay.
Excellent. And of course, if things come to mind when you're not sitting at the board table, you're welcome to send an email or call RJ or myself, and we'll make sure that we find a place to fit this in on the agenda. In that case, now we are ready to move to closed. So closed session will be to consider the appointment. Take employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, that those matters fall under Section 2C1, 2, and 10, excuse me, of the Open Meeting Act. Could I please have a motion to go into closed?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.